That's a new thing. There you go.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
That was new.
Yeah.
It even came across the screen.
Oh, it didn't come across my screen. So interesting.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. This is a North Santiam Sewer Authority work session for May 27th. We're starting at 6:01 PM. And this is our number three work session.
Yes, this is a separate work session.
Yeah. So I want to do a quick roll call. Ken Woodward, present.
Dale Wessie, present.
Joel Parks, present.
Jeff Smith, present.
Thank you, Jeff.
Danielle Gonzalez, Staff Support. And since this is a work session, no official decisions will be made. It'll be brought into a full session. And so we do not have to be in quorum in this, but just want to make sure it's a recording. So our other board members can also hear the information as well.
Correct.
And make comments and all that kind of stuff before we get the full draft.
Well, we turn it over to Danielle Gonzalez.
Thank you. So today what we're trying to do is actually start putting together the pieces for the financial management. Pieces for the North Santiam Sewer Authority, starting with like things like how we want to lay out the budget process, how the accounting is going to happen, and how we're going to do some controlled policies and procedures on the financial management. And to start out, there are some things that as an ORS 190 organization that we must do. And there are actually a lot of things that a traditional government would not, would have to do that we don't have to do. And so I'm just going to read through some questions that I laid out and answers I received from the Special Districts Association of Oregon, the attorney for them. Now they, this is not the attorney for, for the sewer authority, but this is just an attorney just kind of walking through what the, the state law is. And so we didn't necessarily ask for an opinion per se, but just more what the state law is so we can follow that to a T. So let me get to that one. Actually said, as soon as I close this, I was going to lose it. Hold on. Okay. So the questions I asked was, here's the background. The North Santiam Sewer Authority formed in May 2020 as an ORS 190 intergovernmental entity after more than 40 meetings in the communities. The NSSA is a non-tax based entity that in the future will provide sewer services to four cities, Detroit, Gates, Idana, and Mill City. Three of the cities do not currently have sewer service and one city does. The eight-member board consists of two city-appointed members for each represented city. The North Santiam Sewer Authority is independent from the represented cities and has independent authority to make decisions. I said, I am, for the last five years, I've been the Marion County staff for this endeavor. Specifically though, we need to know what is the process for starting this new government, such as filing for a taxpayer identification number, opening bank accounts, hiring staff, along with the state requirements we have for an ORS 190 organization. The questions I posed. In ORS 294 dot 316, section 14, I'm reading that this is a non-tax based ORS 190 entity. So we are excluded from the scope of the local budget law. Question mark, does that mean this North Santiam Sewer Authority can draft and follow their own budget rules, transparency policies, and procedures? That's question one. Next question, are we required to appoint a budget officer? And I put in parentheses, whether we should is a different story. Number two, or excuse me, the next one, we are, are we required to appoint a budget committee? Are, again, the next question, what type of public noticing is required for the budget? Next question, are we required to have public hearings on the budget? Next question, are we required to file budgets and/or audit reports with the Secretary of State's office or the Department of Revenue? Next question, do we have a public record retention requirements? And if so, how long? And then my last question was, what other questions should I be asking? And again, this is not the attorney for the North Santiam Sewer Authority. This is the, this is the Special Districts Association of Oregon's response just to the question on the requirements under ORS 1, the local budget law.
Just wanted to say, Tim Kersh is here and Janet is Food Bank.
Okay, that gave me, thank you. See, you gave me a chance to actually get some water. Thank you. Okay, so her response is, it says, you are correct, as an ORS 190 entity, you would be exempt from the local budget law process, unless you're going to impose property taxes, but it sounds like you're not. You are still required to have a budget and are subject to municipal audit law, which means that every year we would have to submit an audited budget. So yes, you would have to have to have the financial statements audited and sent to the Secretary of State's annually, unless your budget's under 150,000, in which case you may submit an unaudited financial statement to the Social Security Secretary of State for review. So yes, to that part, and yes, you are also subject to regular record requirements. And then she sent the link to that. That's under the governed by the Secretary of State's Archives Division. You'd be technically exempt from the rest of the local budget law requirements. So appointing a budget officer, we are not required to, or a committee, but may establish that as a best practice if the board sees fit. She attached the accounting chapter from the Special Districts Association Administrative Handbook, which you guys saw. It's a good reference for the requirements on audits. Also sent the link to the Secretary of State's Record Retention Requirements and then sent additional documentation for how long those should be required to, to be held on to for documents. Everything else she suggested, obviously, we should reach out to our general counsel and to a CPA or an auditor for guidance on how to set up those processes to protect the interests of the district, the sewer authority, as well as making sure that the process just goes smoothly. So I wanted to put all of that out because that's our barriers, right?
Do you want to get a nice big drink of water?
It's, this is allergy season. It's going to have to be like this.
I know, I know. Oh, oh, yeah.
There you go. I didn't do that. So that's where we stand. We have some requirements, but not all of them. Recommendation from me as a staff is to simplify as much as possible, make it easy for the, for the board to function, but also make sure that we're following some transparency pieces that we want to make sure that, that the public has input. So using, you could potentially use regular public meetings to do that. And then setting up a way to do ongoing updates on the budget. So like if it's quarterly or if it's twice a year. So if you get unexpected money, you can still expend that money. So there's just a lot of pieces, but I wanted to start walking through those individually. So that's where I am. So then my question is, yeah, Dale, go for it.
Kind of a little off talking. We, we lost Kristi Monson, didn't we?
Yeah, Kristi is leaving in July from, from the local government office, local government attorneys from Eugene. She has sent us to a gentleman named Russ. I have not reached out to him yet, but I started an email and waited until after we met so I could give him some guidance on what was expected and then so we can also ask for help there. But I wanted to get some guidance from the board first.
Yeah, I was just curious if we had somebody in mind to step in and if we had a gap there because we'll probably want some advice on this, won't we?
Absolutely. And the attorney may not necessarily be the right, we might need like a CPA or someone to look at that kind of stuff to make sure we're, you know, really doing good practices, good government practices. It's just, we don't have nearly as many requirements as say a regular city would have.
So we're gonna, we're, we're going to want to keep in mind as we move forward then like CPA or a tax attorney, or if anybody on the board hears of somebody that might fit the bill, we want to kind of keep our radar tuned to that so we can bring it to the board.
Right. And so
I don't think.
We always go out, yeah, we can always go out for an auditor. So you like actually have to go out and try to get a like a request for proposal type thing for an auditor. So that's an option as well. And then an auditor would have to be a independent voice. And so you have a CPA that works for your side, and then you have an auditor that actually is supposed to be your honest broker. And then that gets submitted to the state. So that is the one requirement we have. So let me tell you, yeah.
Thank you. The tax attorney will only be needed if we're in trouble.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, similar warning, but yeah. So what a city has to do is they have to appoint a budget officer. They then have to appoint a budget governing body, so like a committee or something like that, a budget committee. And then they have to prepare the budget, each department prepares their budget and submits it and all of that. But then there's a notice of a public hearing that they have to do, a series of public hearings in the, in the public. And then provide, of course, make sure that copy is out to the committee. Then they have to go through the process in a public process. And then there's a certain amount of days that have to happen in between. I'm not thinking you guys want to go that deep. But we still want to make sure that we are being transparent and honest and upfront with people. And also with a honest and true way for the public to be heard. So the question then before you is, do you want to assign a budget officer and a budget committee? That would have to be set up every year.
So in the city of Mill City, obviously, I've been doing budgets there for 20 years as well as on the school board. I've done Santiam School District budgets for over 20 years. Our budget officer is our city recorder. So I don't know if the time comes that we have an administrator for our sewer district, and I'm thinking we're going to need one of some sort. They would probably become our budget officer. All the board members would become budget committee members, and then you can also bring in others. So like city council are all budget committee members. And then we have about an equal number of appointed budget committee members, which are just citizens at large. Half of them are on the planning commission too, but really a lot of them are just citizens at large. And their function really is just to oversee that the budget is that we're expending our money wisely. They don't tell us how to spend our money. They're just there to watch and make sure we're not spending it unwisely. So the, the officer, like I say, should be the person almost that creates our budget. And our city recorder, along with our finance clerk, sits down and creates our budget. We do have contracted oversight from our, our planning advisor, Dave Kenny, who is well-versed in budgets and all that stuff within city governments and stuff like that. So you can get a private consultant or whatever to help, especially maybe the first couple of times, especially if we're having big grants that we're, you know, constructing the project with, things like that. But, you know, obviously we want some sort of expertise in helping prepare the budget. But really, the process is pretty simple once you get rolling. And yes, you have to advertise your meetings and invite the public to the first one, at least I believe there were public hearings and they're open meetings anyway, but you don't have to let all the citizens speak at every meeting, but you do have to open it up at some time for comments and stuff from the public. I guess that's about all I have.
So you're saying we, if we had a manager and then we have our treasurer, Joel, and then we have the board members.
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of what the layout would be.
Right. Whether we wanted to take on a couple more people for the budget committee or not, it is, is fine, but their role really is not to tell us how to spend our money. It's just to see that we're spending it prudently.
Is that the way you see it, Danielle? I mean, a manager, if we could hire one.
Yeah, I mean, we
Be able to afford it.
I would, yeah, I would assume that we actually have to get an administrator or a manager or executive director or something. The reason is whoever the budget officer, then we want to make sure that they are fully bonded and all of that. So there's, there's some other pieces that go along with that. But yes, I mean, I think best practices are to at least have a budget officer that can sign documentation to say that they have certified that it's, that it's an accurate reflection of, you know, what was approved. Expertise is always a good thing when it comes to detail, things like budget, putting together budgets and such. Tim, as I was saying before you got on, is that we are not required to have a budget this year because we're still technically a new organization. And the state law says that if you're formed between March and the end of a year, then you actually have, you don't have to do it that next year, and then you have another time. So, so we have a little bit more space to, to move things forward.
Well, hopefully by the time of the next year, we will be hiring a manager or administrator as well. That'll be nice. And as far as auditing, there's lots of auditing firms out there that you just put out a, a proposal for having to submit a bid. You know, that's pretty simple to do. We've used both Carlisle and Smith out of Stateon before, but now we're with a place called Acuity. And I know that the Acuity does the fire district also for the area. So, you know, there's, there's lots of them out there that do auditing for government agencies.
Yeah, Carl, was it Carlisle and Smith?
Both Carlisle and Smith in Stateon there. Yeah.
So this, the state has requirements for publishing in specific newspaper, in newspapers and for general circulation. It says how often, and then you how often in between. That's more of what I'm saying is I'm, I'm hesitant to say you have to publish it twice in the newspaper because there may not be a newspaper close by. Right? There, those kinds of things, right? I want to make sure it right fits the organization.
Sure. There is the, the Sandy Am Canyon Newspaper, the Canyon Weekly. It's published out of Syo now, but it comes up here and everything. So I think there's also the, there's one out of Stateon too. I think it's actually owned by the state. Yeah, well, not the Statean Mail, it's our town. The Art Town paper that comes up this way and stuff. So there's all those. Hey, I'm going to turn off my video and maybe my audio so I can eat my dinner without you guys watching me. But I am still on the hook and I'm involved here. So I'm, I'll wait for my chance if I'm called upon.
What was, what was that other newspaper besides Canyon Weekly?
It's Art Town.
Yeah, Art Town.
It's actually owned by the same people as, as the Canyon Weekly. And so if you send something, it ends up in both sometimes.
Right.
But that's, yeah. Those are two good local papers for the, the canyon.
Would it also be a good idea to have Ken Cartwright broadcast meetings on the radio? Would that fulfill requirements? Because I think he'd cover the whole district.
Well, the, the newspaper is just to advertise that we're having a meeting. We can use him as a resource to advertise that a meeting is coming up. But broadcast the meetings, I don't know, in person.
Yeah, no, no.
On the radio.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying to advertise that there's a meeting coming up at such and such location.
Yeah, it has, it's, has to be put in the newspaper. I think you have to post it on a local bulletin board or something too. So yeah, I don't know if that would cover the requirements, but it would be good advertising for us nonetheless.
So again, I'm just going to reiterate, we don't have requirements. That's, that's the thing. It's nothing more than a regular, normal meeting requirement, just a public meeting requirement. And I will just caution of if, if these entities won't necessarily exist, I wouldn't want to write them into the, the policies and procedures.
Right.
You know, we can say, we want this widely distributed, so people actually know about it through sources of media such as, right? And then kind of list them out. But if you put specific parameters on it, it becomes effective law. And then if you don't completely follow it, then you can be, it can be contested.
Somebody used it against you.
Or they are being, they're helping to keep you accountable.
Oh, nice governmental way to put it.
So. So Joel, I am interested on your thoughts as well on this. I know it's hard to kind of break out of what, what it already happens, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have anything to add right now. Maybe as we start going, I don't know if we're going to go through this, that pamphlet. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Dale, did you have anything specifically before we start kind of walking through?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And Jeff, did you have anything before we start walking through?
Nope. I'm good.
Okay. So this is the manual actually from the state. So any of these pieces, these are just kind of recommendations for us until we actually have to send, submit things to the Secretary of State's office and create a budget. For an accounting system, we have not set up any financial related transactions or anything like that yet for the accounting system. We would probably have to, I'm assuming, get a specific software program that would be everybody would be happy with. And then have kind of divvy out the chart of accounts. And really the chart of accounts and also the different fund mechanisms. Now, this is where we'll probably have to, and I'm going to jump to the page three, because we're, we're kind of building up a policies and procedures manager, man, manual. The way the fund accounting works is you have different buckets of money. And so if you get money in generally, it's say from revenue from the sewer fees, it comes into a general fund. And then from there it gets distributed to different buckets, either to protect the money for a later investment or to spend the money for, for those investments or for debt service and things like that. I think the document I put together, you know, a nice, easy, understandable thing of what the different buckets of money would be. I think it explains it well that you, everybody has a general fund. And then all of these additional funds are just based on, once you start doing capital projects, you would have a capital projects fund. You could potentially do a project fund just for like Mill City Gates, Detroit and Idana, you could potentially do it. But the more that you break things down, the harder it is to actually move money from different funds. So if you have a capital's projects and you leave all capital projects in one fund, then if Mill City and Gates doesn't cost as much as we think, it can be then shifted to Detroit and Idana. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So anything though, that's in these funds, they really cannot be moved unless you do a budget action to move those. So I'm just kind of laying that out a little bit. And Joel, if I get anything wrong, keep me honest.
Okay.
This will be the first time I'm doing this too. So so obviously we would have to set up a general fund. We would have to number the funds just because it's easier. And then based on your software program, you almost want to, I'm going to use, kind of, you're going to want to tag something so you can search it from different, multiple different pathways. So if you have a specific project, you can say, we're spending this much on this project, even though it might be coming from seven different funds. Does that make sense? So under banking services, the Oregon State Treasury has a qualified depository, so qualified banks that can handle it. And obviously I would just suggest any bank you go with is FDIC insured. That's just, to me, that's the minimum standard of life is to have that. And then anything that can transfer monies from different funds, I don't think that'll be a problem. They're trying to say to the Oregon State Treasurer, which we, we may not necessarily have that as an issue. And then building up those control policies and procedures. You know, we've got to figure out, there is, what is the name of the accounting? Government accounting, what is it under? Do you know, Joel?
Gas or GAAP or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a specific type of accounting that happens in government that does not necessarily happen in business. So this is where my MBA doesn't really help me. So the gap, we would then want to specifically state what type of accounting you're doing. Because when you're doing your budget, you actually have to state out what accounting practices you're using. And because it really, what it's doing is it's determining a language in which the auditors can read it based on the, the different type of accounting. Can I, you okay?
I'm okay. I'm just taking it all in.
Okay. Excuse me.
In ozone.
And, and so once we start this kind of process, how transactions are recorded, how money can be spent through, like, so we've talked about this in the past where the board has to agree to it, but is there like a delegation of authority for like a spending limit, right? So once we hire somebody who has the authority to spend money on behalf of the North Santiam Sewer Authority. In general, you have a, a limit and say, okay, anything under $2,000. You know, something like that, the executive director has full discretion to, to spend that. If it's over a certain amount, then it must come back to the board for, for that expense. So those are the things that I'm talking about is that we have to kind of put limits on and delegation of authority for different things. This is why people like the fact that the state has rules, right? Because then you could just open the manual and says, it says this. And so we follow it. But when you're developing your own, it's, it's a little bit more flexible. And then when we say, okay, you can spend this money, then that's, goes back to the documentary evidence at the bottom of page four. So in the past, what we've done when we've spent money, so we haven't really spent money, Joel, since you've really been here for the most part. What we were doing is signing it physically because we were in the rooms together. After the board approved it, we had two signatures from two different cities. That was prior to the authority being formed. And so we'll now need to revisit what that looks like. That is it, is it just how many people have signing authority? We've got to also figure out what that looks like. Who's the one that actually is going to have to go to the bank with me to get it set up? Those types of things. And then under developing a federal tax ID, how, how do we actually have to label that out with, with a specific? Because you have to typically assign a person, if I'm not mistaken, or an organization. Let's see.
Here we go.
Um, and then of course they talk about on page five, the risk assessment, right? So in general, your risk of theft or misdeed or error, I was, let's talk about error. Errors happen, the more people that touch things. So the more people that touch things, the more likely you are to have errors, right? But at the same time, the less people that touch things, the more likely you have misdeeds. And so we have to figure out what that balance becomes. Because you can have a person that's just one person that does all of the work, but nobody's ever accounting for them. And um, you're more likely than to have difficulties um, with keeping the money secured. The best way I can say it. My, am I kind of balancing that, Joel, okay?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, I like the idea of having someone that authorizes it, someone that actually makes the transaction and then another person that records it, at least having three different specific job duties, so yeah. Well, and like whoever records it obviously can't make purchases or authorize purchases, and I think that'd be good.
The one, the one thing I will say though, is that may not be an option early on. Right? Because we may only have one or two staff people, and they have to be flexible enough to do all of that work. Um, and so that's where, that's where we have to build in the, the check and balance, right? That's the part of the checks and balances is the fact that the treasurer, Joel, is bringing the reports back if we've spent any money, if we need to pay bills and all that stuff. So that actually helps with your checks and balances. Um, let's see. Bonding, again, bonding is a insurance coverage for uh, error, omissions and misdeed. Am I correct on saying that?
Accountability.
Thank you, yes. It's accountability, but also it protects the organization from um, from an individual doing bad things.
They can still do bad things, but it's, yeah.
It's a protector for the organization, right? People do things when they have means, motive and opportunity. So you just try to limit one or two of those pieces and you just have to hope that, that they don't have the motive, right? Um, they also talk about on page six about public funds collab, uh, collateralization, collateralization. Uh, I don't think that's something we even think about at this moment. We have nothing to collateralize, collateralize yet. Um, but that's a, a point down the road. And then the audit, so we talked about how we have to submit a form to the Secretary of State's office. That's what we've been talking about for the last couple of months. Um, that is under the municipal audit law. Um, that is required for the ORS one ninety organization. Uh, if you have a budget of less than a hundred and fifty thousand, then really you don't have to do a full audit. All you do is submit a form, and that's kind of where we've been in this last couple of years. Yep, and so it's, it's a uh, form in lieu of audit is what it's, it's actually called. And so that's, took us a little bit to kind of figure all this out, but that's what that is. And that's where it falls into place for, for the sewer authority. Um, and then there's lesser requirements for an audit if it's under a half a million dollars. And then purpose of the audit, I think that's pretty much self-explanatory documents in the audit, and then the audit report, it's very specific on what it must include. To be, to, to be satisfactory for the Secretary of State's office.
It's, it's not the amount of money that you receive is what your expenditures are.
It's a little bit of both. So your budget, your budget, it's, it has to balance, right? Right? So you have to show where all of the money is, and so if you have um, uh, expenses and revenue that is more than a hundred and fifty thousand together, they, then you have to have it in there. Does that make sense? Am I explaining that well enough?
A receiving or distributing, okay.
So like you could, like Yeah, you could potentially say, we got two hundred thousand dollars in revenue, but we only spent a hundred and fifty. You still have to do that, or if you say, oh, we had two hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses, but we only brought in a hundred and fifty thou, a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, you still have to do it because your budget has to balance. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
And then records retention, we have to keep things for at least two years, which is required for an ORS one, one ninety organization. And minutes, they say, should be maintained forever. Yeah.
Uh, but we don't have minutes, we have summaries and recording, okay.
Yeah, um, again, this is their document, this is, we're just going off of it. Uh, as long as you have a recording, you don't technically have to have minutes, summary notes are fine. Um, so that was me searching that out, trying to figure it out. And so then they actually provided, so this was just a small chapter of the fun book that I'm reading over here, that is the uh, local budgeting manual. So that's, that's the big picture. And now we've got like a twenty minutes, just kind of discuss what you want in it. So this is just a draft that we're gonna look at. That we're dra, we're just, it's literally, we're just gonna drop things into uh, bullet points, so then we can start drafting an actual manual for, for the organization.
Now you said we could have two funds, one for like Mill City Gates and the other one for Detroit and Idana.
It would be in the same budget, though.
It's in the same budget. They're just broken out into funds. I highly don't suggest doing it that way, but right, I think you should have it based on.
Why do you say that?
Um, because the money is harder to use fl, in a flexible way, right? It's one thing to say, we have capital projects that we need to pay for this. And then we're gonna say fifty thousand dollars for debt service, right? So we're gonna use fifty thousand dollars to go pay off a loan. Then that is protected from your capital, your capital builds, right? But if your capital build is so minute, and you have to do it for, if you go out for a bond on a specific project, then you do have to keep it in a separate um, fund. But otherwise, if your capital improvement's one, you kind of want it a little bit flexible. So you can use it, say, oh wait, we're gonna need this pump this month that we didn't expect.
They can have your capital outlay fund, but you can have the other things as line items within that fund. So you could move your money around within that fund. But to move it outside of that fund takes a budgetary process. So you could, we could have capital outlay, and then we could have the Mill City project, the Detroit project. And we could have, you know, even have a, a pipeline as one project. I mean, you could have different line items to see where the money's actually going, and then you can move the money around within those line items. Right, so.
Pipeline, stuff like that.
Right, and when you're actually doing your, your budget, the budget officer looks at all those line items. But really to, to report to the Secretary of State, you just have the one fund, capital outlay. And they don't, they don't have to review every line item and stuff that way. Because we did it that way for years, and it was very tedious, and a couple of years ago, though, the Secretary of State's office wanted every municipality and stuff to kind of get on board with the same format. And that's the format we use, and it's just so much simpler. So some of the old school folks still want to see what every line item is, but uh, uh, we can go through the budget process in a, a meeting and a half rather than six or eight meetings now, yeah. So it's simplistic, I would say.
That's why I put everything column and turn it, and turned it over to the taxman and locked away.
Yeah.
And if anything was wrong, ah, we made a mistake.
So what I'm hearing is, is that there is some, some desire for assigning a budget officer.
You heard that out of all this?
I, I did. I didn't, I, I heard that because really, very honestly, a budget officer, um, it makes it much simpler to have one person kind of coordinate that whole piece. So I did hear that, um, and please tell me if anybody's not okay with this approach. Um, I heard people say that they were comfortable with the board being the budget committee. I did not hear anything specifically about uh, adding citizens though at large. Um, you could have them on the, on the budget committee, or you can actually just have the open meeting. Um, that is, that's, that is something I actually need some guidance on.
I would say it's more difficult to try and, I mean, if you have a, a number of people you're trying to hit a target for, trying to get people to those meetings can be difficult. Uh, you, you find some interest, but not a lot. So if we have it limited just to our board members, I think it goes a lot better, and, but we just advertise that we're having our budget meeting, uh, just for, you know, letting the community know.
Anybody else have anything on that one?
No, I agree. I, I would think we'd want at least public comment. Not necess, not necessarily public involvement on the budget committee, but uh, we would at least invite public comment, whether it's in person or written or however.
In, in your opening meeting or before you adopt the budget, you invite public comment, but you don't necessarily want it all budget meeting long, because there's some people that like to comment on everything.
I, I agree.
So I, I hear no citizens at large on that board, but invite for public comment. And then uh, I did hear some other pieces that wouldn't necessarily go in the policies and procedures, but maybe as a recommendation of how to make that happen, like potentially having budget meetings on the radio, pot, potentially doing um, uh, other types of, I'm assuming YouTube is gonna be here to stay for a while. So doing, you know, doing things like that. Okay, so with those pieces, um, then we would probably have to put together a calendar, a budget calendar in the year. How early, Tim, do you guys start working on your budgets for the city?
Wow, they start working at it right after the first of the year, because we have to have it finalized by the end of June. But, but we've had ours, we just actually adopted ours uh, at our last meeting. So we start having our meetings, but you gotta, but, calendar laid out this far as, I, I want to say it comes out in February, into January, early in February is our calendar, showing when we're gonna advertise that the meetings are there, and then, then on down the line when the first meeting is. Like I say, fortunately, we, we can do it in just a couple of meetings now, rather than where it used to take five or six, so it goes a lot faster. So if you're having your meetings in March, you know, or April, typically gives you plenty of time to get it done by the end of June.
Okay, so say, and I'm, I'm trying to put the, the budget calendar is due maybe by February fifteenth.
Okay.
Just the kind of, to, so then it's all laid out for the rest of the remainder of the fiscal year, does that sound? Or am I, is that earl, too early in the year?
No, no, I don't think it's too early, and it's, I think that's pretty good, February fifteenth. And you can, like in that, you can say, okay, we're gonna start our advertising. Now, if there isn't any requirements for advertising, I guess it's really not, that's kind of moot, but we could still, you know, start posting, say that we're gonna post early in March that we're gonna have our meetings, beginning the first of April or first meeting in April or whatever. And then have a couple of meetings on it, I, I don't know how long it'll take to go over this. Obviously, when it comes time for construction and stuff, there's gonna be some, some, a lot of zeros in there. So we want to be able to have time to absorb it, the first, first uh, budget or two will probably be time consuming, so maybe a lot for three meetings, you know, and the city, the school, they, we all do them just once every week until they get it done. So it's like, okay, this month we got a meeting every Thursday night to do our budget or whatever.
So that is the encouragement to get it done by meeting every week, so you missed the same shows and you've missed now a week.
Well, that's right, so yeah, if we can get it done in one meeting, great, two meetings, not as good, three meetings, bad, and four meetings, oh my goodness, let's get this over with.
Okay, so um, February fifteenth, I'm gonna kind of soft that, February fifteenth, maybe March one. Um, or, yeah, because I don't want to say February twenty ninth, that would be bad.
Right. Every four years.
That's my grandson's birthday.
So he's gonna have a really sweet, sweet sixteen when he's in his forties, right?
Yeah, he'll, he'll only be four.
Okay, so debt service fund, we've kind of talked about that. As we're setting up one, obviously we should have a general fund. Um, we really need to make sure that there's a debt service fund, capital projects fund. Um, and I think for now, I think those are the first three, and then of course you have um, the general fund actually covers where your employees are and where all kind of the basic operations are. Am I missing any other funds that are absolutely essential?
What were the three funds? Debt, debt service?
Yeah, general, debt service, capital projects fund.
What, what fund would employee payroll come out of?
Yeah, that comes from general fund. The only time it doesn't come only from general fund is if it's specific to a product that was a bond related and it's staffing for that bond-related project.
So like in the city, we, we do have an equipment fund or whatever that we put a little bit money in every year. Now, we obviously could add that later on, so that we're saving for new equipment, whether it's a new pickup or a new backhoe or whatever, it's our, our equipment reserve fund. So we do do stuff like that, and we're just trying to shovel a little bit of money into it every year. But, yeah, most of our regular funds also have a reserve fund behind them. And uh, I think, was, all the reserve funds are actually kind of tied together as reserve funds.
But we won't be having the equipment, will we?
Oh, I mean, at some point you probably want to have that.
We might want to have a backhoe or something.
It's better to set them funds up now, like just at least the basic ones that you're gonna absolutely need, than wait until you need it, and then you're like, oh, I've gotta go through a budget process to add a new fund.
Right, so even though we might not buy a backhoe right off the bat, we might be buying some, some sort of a, a equipment that, that traces where the pipes are, or whatever, looks for leak detection systems or, or something like that that we might have to have as a piece of equipment. And obviously, until the plant gets built, we don't need any of that, but.
But the fun.
But.
Yeah, there's equipment for the treatment facilities too. There's gonna be pumps, filters, all that kind of stuff. Sooner we save for it, the better off we are.
So maybe what we do is we just do it very simply and just put general debt, capital and reserve, and then subcategories under the reserve.
Yeah.
Under the capital. Everybody feels comfortable with that?
Yes.
Um, and then we would put together the calendar at the beginning of the year, and then the goal obviously would be to have a budget uh, by before the beginning of the fiscal year, so before July one. So.
Of this year or next year?
Sorry, I'm just saying in general years. So June.
You're getting some money.
Yeah.
Money.
June thirtieth, it has to be done, right? Um, and so then the question is on the supplemental budgets, so I don't know if that's actually something we have to do, is the supplemental budgets. Um, I don't know how that is, works with the ORS, I didn't ask that piece, so I'll need to ask that information. Um, so uh, that was the other thing, public hearings, so once the budget is for- Um, so, uh, that was the other thing, public hearings. So once the budget is formed and all of that stuff, there is no requirement for a public hearing, but it is required to be reviewed in a public meeting. Cause a public hearing is different than just a public meeting. So what your, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, after the budget committee, which, which is the board of directors.
Yeah.
After they finalize the budget, then it goes to the board to be voted on and accepted by the board. So which I would say would be done at their next regular board meeting, rather than at the budget meeting. The budget committee approves it to be forwarded on to the board for approval. So basically it just goes to the next meeting and that, in that timeframe, uh, the public, if they want to can review it and then you can have public comment at the beginning of the, the board meeting. Before the board accepts the budget or finalizes it.
So we can have a proposed budget and put it on our, uh, on our, in our website.
So yeah, so the budget committee says we've got it. And then it moves forward to be voted on, final approval by the board of directors at the next regular board meeting. Instead of a special budget meeting.
But how are you going to get it to the public so they can see it? Do you have to put it in the paper or do you put it on the web?
No, you don't have to. It can be on our website.
Okay. No, I just.
Yeah. But they just have to know that you're going to be adopting it and.
So you could put it in the paper saying go into our website to review the budget and then.
Right.
And next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I have that as the, the budget committee members, which is the board plus the budget officer. Um, then forwards it saying we're ready to, to forward it to the board for official approval. That timeframe is typically at least a week, right?
Right. I would think so.
Right.
Yeah. Cause it's going to be from a budget meeting to a formal board meeting.
Right.
And that's the only real difference. The faces will still be the same.
Well, and I think maybe that's where that calendar really comes into play, right? Is that, you know, you schedule the meetings out and if you don't need them as a budget committee up until that point, you still have that final, when, when it's expected to be approved by, that stays constant. So people can.
So, yeah, so obviously it would be to, if the, in our budget calendar, we would have to have it to be adopted at the board meeting in June.
Or we could even request it be adopted in May.
We could, yeah. We have until June to adopt it, I guess.
Okay. We don't have to certify with the tax assessor because we're not getting any taxes. Um, okay. So supplemental budgets, the way it explains it here is that if you have a situation where money is not have been, has not been accounted for. Um, and so say you get a big grant in the middle of the year. Right? And your budget didn't have that money in there. Then you have to do a supplemental budget process. And we need to define what that looks like. So a supplemental budget process could be just going back to the budget committee to accept the, the additional funds and then it goes back to, uh, supplemental budget approval. So is it okay if we just kind of refer it back to the same process?
I would think so, absolutely. And, and also if you, so if you want to move over ten percent of a fund balance into a different fund, that requires a supplemental budget committee meeting too.
Is that required though in Oregon local budget law or is that required in GAAP? Does that make sense?
I don't know. I don't know who writes the rules. I just know the ones we're living by.
I'm just waiting for them.
Yeah.
The reason I say this is because the ten percent, I think that that is actually a state.
I believe so.
And it's not actually a requirement of the GAAP accounting principles.
I see. Okay.
So this is where, this is where that nuance is, right?
Right.
If, if you want that flexibility and say, okay, up to this amount, we can still. So just a thought.
Right. I don't see, we're keeping ours pretty simple. So I don't see us having to move ten percent around very often, obviously. So I'm fine with the GAAP rules. The less rules, the better.
That's what I'm trying to.
Here.
So get less rules, but with the transparency and the accountability, if we can find that balance.
Exactly. I agree.
Find that balance. That's where we need to be.
So all we have to do is if we get a big grant in the middle of the year, we just have to note it. Usually yes. And then where we put it. But do we have to determine policy on how we handle that?
You have to put it, you just have to put the process, right? You just have to be consistent with the process. Right? Because the last thing you want to do is say, oh, we got a big one. Let's just go ahead and spend it now. And then you didn't have a process for it. And so that's when it becomes sticky.
I think it's FASBA, the ten percent rule is Financial Accounting Standards Board. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's GAAP for sure.
Okay. So, um, so you're saying that that is state or is that actually one of the accounting standards?
Uh, I think that's one of the accounting standards actually. Yeah. But I don't know for sure. I, sorry.
Okay. If you would help us actually get to that, to see if, to see if that is the accounting standard or if that's just the state law. That would be very helpful, Joel, because then we can just, um, say according to the state law, this, or we can say according to this.
That's, okay. Yeah.
You might be able to, you might be able to ask Stacy Cook. She's our budget officer and has been for years.
Or I'll ask one of the CPAs I work with.
Okay.
That'd be.
Joel works in the right place for us to get information like this.
Yes, indeed.
Okay. So this is kind of our basic things that we've talked about. I'm not going to keep you much longer just because, um, I promised only an hour. Um, but I do think we need to actually put in there, uh, process, start talking about the process of procurement. Um, as part of the financial pieces, we do not have to follow Oregon procurement rules. That is one of the benefits of the ORS one ninety. This is what we talked about early on. So there is, the question is, do you want to go through official processes? To put out requests for, um, you know, proposals, or if you want to go out, I think it saves, um, it definitely, it just looks better. It's just a best practice.
Right. Request for qualifications on stuff like, uh, even the, the auditors and stuff like that, you know, and or request for bids, obviously. You get the best price and you get to, you know, see what everybody's doing. I like it.
So there's a best price where you can do best value.
Ah, yeah, I always say best value, I think, because sometimes the best price isn't the best value.
This is overall rules used for everything for contracts or. That's why I try it.
You want to set, uh, a minimum for you to go out, like, you know, again, you don't want to necessarily have to go out for pencils, right?
Right.
You don't want to have to set yourself up where you have to go out for bid for every piece of paper that you use.
Absolutely not.
So what the county has is a minimum. So if it's under twenty-five thousand dollars, again, it's at the county level. If it's under twenty-five thousand, you are not required to get bids, right? But above that, you have to either get written bids or, um, some can be verbal over the phone, but you have to take very detailed notes, but again, twenty-five thousand for them. But when I first started the county was five thousand, right? So it's just, it's changed over the years.
We set it for a thousand, didn't we?
A thousand is pretty small.
Yeah, I know, I know. But we did set it for a thousand in the beginning, I think.
I don't remember that, but.
What's it take to change it if we don't like it after a while? I mean, could we start with ten thousand and then change it to twenty-five if we think that's too small? We find ourselves buying a bunch of twelve thousand dollar items. I don't know.
I'm, I'm interested to see where Dale and Jeff or how you're feeling on that.
I, I think, uh, I agree with Tim. I think ten thousand's a good limit to start with. Um, when I was doing water heaters, I was in tankless units that were getting pretty close to that and, and on a commercial scale. I could see some repairs. We just had to do filters for the water plant and I can't remember. I want to say they were sixteen thousand dollars. So a ten thousand dollar limit, I think is, is pretty good and anything over that. And we can adjust it moving forward and see what the revenues are and how they balance out and, um, it's just kind of a starting point as far as I'm concerned.
Do we want to add in for an emergency provision?
Probably should.
I would think so. Now, so like in Mill City, we have like a, a preferred vendor also for something like, uh, a pump goes out, we have a vendor that we go to. Uh, and so we don't have to ask for bids. They're just our, our go-to people.
Trusted vendor.
Yeah, whatever. Trusted vendor, something like that.
That preferred vendor though, was it a preferred vendor because you went out for bids previously and just said, we'll extend this as long as we need your services?
I think that's because they're about the only ones that had this particular pump.
Gotcha. Okay.
And, uh, I mean, they, they're the one that handles all the, the different controls and the different pumps and stuff for our current sewer system. It's flight, whatever. I don't know. Big name.
That would be like a sole source.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
So, and, and in those situations, most of the time, the contractors are working on a time and material basis. They're not, it's not like a contract, contract anyway. Um, we had K and E excavating out to replace some culverts from the fires and uh, I'm pretty sure that's the way they approached it. The bill ended up getting pretty high, pretty quick off a thistle down, but, um, most contractors in an emergency situation, they do a time and material. So contract, sending it out for contracts, kind of a different context. So.
Yeah, yeah. Cause there's, there's different ways we're going to be spending the money, like the, the hiring contractors to do that kind of work. But ours was, like I was talking about, the preferred vendor was just buying a pump. Not, it's not installing it or anything. Our own people do that. Uh, so it's just purchasing hard goods. So, uh, so I, you know, I like ten thousand dollars, but I do like flexibility. Obviously, emergency clause should just take, uh, a, a couple of board members or whatever to approve it or something. Obviously you want the more board better members, the better. But in an emergency, you just want to be able to do it. I get calls once in a while from public works, uh, saying, hey, this is happening. And I just say, go do it. We'll, we'll ratify it at a meeting later, but it has to be done. It's something that has to be done.
Right.
Does Jeff have any comment?
I think, I think ten thousand with an emergency clause, sounds like a good amount.
So then the delegation of authorities and mind you, we don't have a staff yet, but delegation of authority for, uh, spending. So we'll put that ten thousand dollar limit. Let's just stay consistent with that number. If that's okay.
Yeah.
If you feel comfortable with that, um, and then we can maybe go up. Once it's above that, then it needs board approval. Or, yeah, or incurrence or something like that.
But once, once we're built, we'll have an idea of what some of the parts costs. So right now we just, we don't even know, you know, what, but those replacement parts might be. Well, at least have a general idea when the, we get hopefully an itemized construction um, idea, or if we don't, we can always just ask them, hey, what's it cost for that pump? That kind of deal. Then if we need to adjust it, we can adjust it. But right now we're blind and those prices could change between now and the time of construction, the way construction prices are going at the moment.
Well, and I think generally what we would do is actually not necessarily individually contract for all those little tiny pieces. What you do is you contract with the engineer that takes care of that. And then they build that out. Does that make sense? So we're, and then when you, when we're finishing up, not the master plan, but when we actually do the full engineering where it's got all of those pieces, uh, you put together a plan at that point for replacement of parts and things like that as well at the same time. So I think you're absolutely right. We start, we'll start getting more knowledge on how much these things actually cost.
Well, we, we also should have a buddy that's been chief engineer to Marriott hotels, opened them brand new. And you, you usually get a service life schedule type deal with anything that's brand new like that. You can expect this motor to last this long, these filters to last this long. Uh, it's like even once a year, he had to go in and tighten all the big giant panel connections with aluminum wires for the incoming feed. That should be part of the design moving forward so that the authority knows uh, what it can anticipate for regular maintenance. So we should, once we get that, then if we got to adjust to ten thousand or start searching for suppliers where we can locate parts, then we can address that at that time.
I think that's a great, it's a great piece.
Yeah, that's, that's very true. I, I can see us having to adjust a few things since we're coming into this cold. Uh, but the more we think about things like this, uh, I think it's a great tool going forward.
I forgot one of the funds, unappropriate, unappropriated funds or, um, so that's going to be your carryover cash. Sorry, I didn't think that. So you might need to add that too. Okay. This gives me enough to start. What am I missing? This gives me at least some, some parameters to start writing things.
I don't know.
I, I think it's pretty thorough for a, a start and we may hear something from other board members that aren't in attendance tonight, but, um, I, I, I think it's a good start and until we get some more information. Um, once the master plans finalized and construction documents are finalized, then I don't, I personally, and, and the finance stuff's a little over my head, but it's, uh, I think this gives us a really good foundation.
Yeah, I think that this will help because then I could start thinking through like, okay, now we got to get a bank account. There's like seven steps we have to do before we can get a bank account as an organization. You know, um, silly still, stuff like that. And the last time we discussed it, we discussed just using the local bank, whatever is available there in Mill City. Um, but if there's another bank down the road, to me it goes back to, well, it's above the ten thousand. If we go and we'd have to reevaluate if there's another bank, but right now it's a sole source. There is no other bank. So, okay. Well, I have enough for me today.
I got, I got two more questions.
Yeah.
Um, one, I know the city council has to post something locally. Trace Hill posted it, Sierra Liquor Store and out in front of city hall. Do we have to do that in four locations?
Nope, we don't. And that's, that's the key. And I'm going to write that in there that, that we're going to notice it just like we would any other public meeting.
Okay. And then, uh, I was trying to find it and I'm not finding it. Um, there was something about investments is so if, if the accounting procedures have a balance, then does that mean that the authority could actually take some of that money and invest it for future returns, for gains, um, long-term holding versus just having in a, in an account doing nothing?
Yeah. And I think we're just not ready for that. Yes, yet. Um, so in general, when you uh, start working on the, with the banking and all that kind of stuff, you do end up starting to get interest on, um, some of the holdings, especially if you have a lot of, a lot more funds. on um, some of the holdings, especially if you have a lot of, a lot more funds. I know that happens for our Oregon Video Lottery proceeds, is that they start building up accrued interest. Um, and then that is accounted for back into your budget that following year, right? So um, that's what that unappropriated fund balance is. It's, it's kind of your extra money that you're using for emergencies. But also it carries over for investment purposes as well.
Dale, don't you have a, um, not to, uh, don't you have a council meeting?
Uh, I don't think it's, uh, not tonight. It's next Thursday.
Okay.
It's next Thursday, so.
Right, we'll be voting on something next Thursday anyway.
Yep.
So everybody feels satisfied where we're at so far?
Yes, basic rules, basic.
Yeah, okay. So um, I'm gonna try to incorporate some help to start drafting up some, some policies and procedures. I think having a delegation of authority and really narrowing it down that we would assign a budget officer. I do think we should go through the budget process, even though it might be stunted this year. We don't know who that is.
But he's on my right side.
Because you're pointing Tim to me.
Yeah, I know, that's, he's on my right, so. See?
I'm in the middle screen here.
So yeah, I think this will get us at least part of the way there. I do think, though, we should do a budget this year. Even if it's just for the hundred and fifty that we know for sure that we'll be getting from the county. Um, I just don't know if it's gonna happen in this fiscal year or next. I'm, at this point, I'm going to assume it's gonna be next fiscal year being July. So that's where we're at.
Tell your wife hello.
Okay, well, they say hi.
Uh, FYI, I'm out of town next week, so I won't be at the regular board meeting.
Um, you're going to miss a lot. It, this, this one, I will, um, so this is one that I probably would want to debrief with you after then.
Okay.
Um, so uh, I just don't have all the details yet. Because we're gonna, we're gonna. Yeah, we're gonna deep dive into um, the master plan documents. I am supposed to have a couple of drafts. It won't be a full a hundred percent draft, but a couple of drafts um, by Monday. Those to you guys as soon as I have them. If I get them over the weekend, I'll make sure that everybody has them. So.
Or voting on the budget person.
I'm gonna be drifting down the John Day Wilderness Area.
Thinking about us, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate all of you guys.
All right, well, it's um.
And us, you, we wouldn't be here without you.
Yeah, thank you.
We're just gonna keep trying.
Forward.
I have to make a correction. I, I don't know if the number that we've put out is for fifty or sixty million dollars. I have two different documents that have two different things on it. So, you know, only ten million dollars difference in the legislature that I don't know. And I didn't have time to go search it out. So I don't know if it's fifty or sixty that we've requested at the legislature, but everything is looking good, is what I've heard. So. With two, so.
Awesome.
All right, it's gonna be a big meeting.
If you need anything from us.
Thank you.
Testifying or whatever, legislator or whatever.
I, I think all of the hearings are done.
Good.
All right, it's seven fifteen, May twenty seventh. We are finished.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.